All right, we call this meeting to order.
All in favor say aye. I oppose. Pass is four zero. All right, first item is no action items. We have the Cabarrus County Schools report. Who wants to say you're going to come up? Okay.
Dr. Cipicki and company are going to do a presentation for you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Wortman, Mr. Pittman, Commissioner Lindsey, and Commissioner Shu, thank you for the time to speak this evening at the Commissioner's work session. We wanted to come and share with you the most recent school performance results that kind of shed some light on some of the academic successes that are taking place in the Cabarrus County Schools. We want some time on the work session with the Board of Commissioners to share this information with you because you're an integral part of our success. You clearly have supported us over the years, continue to support us. So we want to make sure that we're being good partners too and sharing the good information that's coming out of some of the hard work that you're doing when you're here as a Commissioner. So we deeply appreciate the support and the work that you're doing. And we're here to tell you proudly that that work has not gone without a lot of hard work on your end, but also I can tell you that that hard work that you're putting in is paying off great dividends to our kids and our community here in Cabarrus County. So you should feel very happy and very proud of the success that we're having because you are a large part of that success, so we thank you for that. I'm going to hand it over to Carl Sane, who is our Chief Technology and Information Officer, an expert with data like no one I've ever seen. So he's going to share some information with you. And if you have any questions as we go through or at the end of it, please do ask him. We'll be happy to share those with you. Mr. Sane?
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to share some fantastic news about the work that our school staff have done to make a difference in children's lives. So each September, the state of North Carolina releases what's called the School Performance Grade Results. That is, all of the data surrounding how, all the metrics that our school system tracks on a regular basis that is for school accountability purposes. So the Every Student Succeeds Act from the federal government requires every state to come up with a grading system for schools. It's got, there's certain metrics that it's got to include, things like reading test scores, math test scores, graduation rate. The state of North Carolina releases in September the prior year's results. And so I'm here to share some exciting news about the progress that our schools have made. So the quick overview is that Cabarrus County Schools continues to outperform the state with higher letter grades on average, more growth on average, and then higher proficiency rankings than the rest of the state of North Carolina. By any objective measure, this was the most successful school year we've had from a testing, from a graduation, from a participation standpoint in Cabarrus County Schools' history. Performance metrics continue to improve across the board, including graduation rate, college career readiness indicators, and then grade level proficiency. As we started out, educators, if you know any, are really good about using educational lingo. And so I wanted to define a few terms. The school performance grade is the rating system that I referenced just a minute ago. This is an A through F letter grade system. This is mostly achievement, so how did students do on state tests? How do we do on graduation rate and so forth? Combined with growth, growth is a measure of how did the students perform relative to expectations? So a student that is right in the middle of the bell curve, the 50th percentile, if they outperform that, then we would get credit for growth, for instance. Achievement, as you can see, counts as 80% of that formula. These are indicators like proficiency on end-of-grade or end-of-course assessments, your graduation rate, the progress that English learners make. Math course rigor is how many students took an advanced math course, and then how students do on a college or career readiness exam like the ACT or Work Keys. The growth counts as 20%, and again, this is how did students fare relative to expectations on a per-student level. Students that have been high achievers historically need to outperform other high achievers, for instance. Grade level proficiency, you'll see me reference. This is the percentage of students that score at least a level three, four, or five on an end-of-grade assessment. Grade level proficiency is the mark for what it constitutes to be on grade level. Across the state of North Carolina, that number is just above 50%. If you're familiar with Lake Wobegon of NPR, not all students can be above grade level, right? All students can't be above average. So the typical school district is around 50% proficiency across the state. College and career readiness means that you are at least a level four or five. That means that you are on track for college or career. And then I've got two comparison districts. The large 12 districts are the largest 12 school districts in the state of North Carolina, which includes Cabarrus County. This represents over half of the student population in the state of North Carolina. You can imagine that the large school districts have a number of logistical, are similar logistically as far as moving the needle for students. So it's helpful to compare ourselves to the large districts. Sometimes a school system with a single high school, for instance, can see certain numbers on their proficiency or growth because they might have a single teacher in a grade or a single teacher in a subject. The large 12 districts are similar logistically. And then I've also compared us in some of these metrics to the southwest region. These are all of the school systems from Cleveland County to the west, to Stanley County in the east. Geographically, we're all similar. We experience some of the same types of students, so it makes sense to compare us to our region. So as an overall perspective and context, it's helpful to see where the state of North Carolina lands. So again, we have an A through F rating system. It's a 15-point scale, so to receive an A, you need to receive a score between 85 and 99. Across the state of North Carolina, only about 7% of schools receive that A. In a, this is not built the same way that a letter grade of A that a student might receive on a report card. So on a report card, you typically start at a grade of 100, and you work your way down. If you don't turn an assignment, the student's grade drops. If they miss questions on their test, their grade drops. The school performance grade is actually the opposite. You really start at a zero, and you have to work your way up. Every time a student receives a proficient score, every time a student graduates and walks across the stage, you're working away from a zero up to 100. So that A rating is an incredibly high mark for a school to achieve. Again, 7% of the state of North Carolina receives an A. I'm very excited to share that almost a quarter of Cabarrus County Schools received that A rating. Over a quarter received a B rating, so about half of our schools received either an A or a B. This slide shows a comparison to those other contextual groups. So the largest 12 districts, the southwest region, how the charter schools fared across the state, and then how the state of North Carolina fared. So you can see on this chart, Cabarrus County Schools' far surpasses state. The largest regions, the regional districts, and then charter schools on our percentage of schools that received an A, on our percentage of schools that received a B. And then, of course, most of that's coming at the expense of D and F schools, which we have very few of. You can see that 22% of our A schools would have been the fourth highest mark out of the 115 school districts. So we're doing a great job of, as far as the metrics are concerned, on school performance grades. For some perspective, we had several schools improve their rating. These are shown on this slide. Hickory Ridge Elementary moved from a B rating up to an A. Patriots, Pitt School Road, and Weddington Hills moved from a C to a B. Northwest Cabarrus moved from a D to a B. And then AT Allen and Roberta Road Middle School both moved from a D to a C. Seven schools improved this letter grade. They actually also give us a numerical score that creates that letter grade. So I mentioned that an 85 to a 99 represented an A. So we get that numerical grade. 34 of our 41 schools improved their numerical score, which is astronomical. You typically see some move up and some move down. Over three-quarters of our schools improved their numerical score. Also wanted to provide some background on growth. So there's a large conversation around what's more important, getting students to pass the test, which is largely an indicator of ZIP code versus how do students do on growth? Are the students pound for pound increasing their scores? If they're at the top of the achievement scale, are they increasing their scores relative to those high achievers? If they're a lower achieving student, they've got to increase their scores relative to the lower achieving students. On this metric, we also outperformed the state of North Carolina. So not only are students achieving high marks, but we're also growing students at a faster rate than the state of North Carolina. So across the state, about 43% of schools meet growth, kind of meet that expectation. The students did about what were expected. Of the remaining 57%, about half are classified as exceeding typical growth, and then half are classified as not meeting expected growth. So that's about 28% do more than normal, 29% do less than normal, and 43% are right on where they're expected. The analogy that I use with the educators is thinking of it as a race. So if you start a race with 99 people in it, some people are going to pass people in line. Every time they get passed in line, that means someone's getting passed and they're moving backwards. And so that's what's happening here. If you're passing people in line, that means that you're exceeding growth. Compared to the state, we had, again, 28% of schools across the state exceed growth. Almost half of our schools exceeded growth. So we had 19 schools out of the 40 that received a growth score exceeded. Another 16 met the expectation for growth, and then only five did not meet growth. Here's the comparison to, again, the same groups. So if you compare us to the largest 12 districts across the state, if you compare us to our region, if you compare us to charter schools or to the rest of the state of North Carolina, again, 48% of our schools exceeded growth, and 88% either exceeded or met. Both of those marks would be tops in the state or in the top 10 of the state. So exciting news to share, both from an achievement standpoint, but then also for how are we doing with students as far as how they're progressing? We had a few highlights to share. I would have liked to have highlighted every one of our schools that had an outstanding number, but there's not enough room on the slide to highlight them all. So I'll just highlight the ones that are tops in the state. So WR Odell Elementary School, out of over 1,200 elementary schools, was number one in the state of North Carolina in overall growth. They're a high-achieving school. Their proficiency rate, the number of students passing would also place them at the very top of the state. But growth, again, refers to how are the students doing relative to projections? So not only are they scoring high, but they're actually increasing their score faster than the rest of the state. Number one out of all elementary schools in the state, and number one in reading out of all elementary, middle, and high schools in the state. Their overall growth score was fifth, behind a few middle and high schools. Hickory Ridge Middle School was also number six overall in the state of North Carolina out of over 2,500 schools. I was also excited to share that every single high school in the district either met growth or exceeded growth for the first time in history. And then I was looking at, I noticed as I scrolled down the growth scores across the state, I just kept seeing Cabarrus County, Cabarrus County, Cabarrus County at the top of the chart. We had nine schools that were in the top 10% of the state of North Carolina. Obviously, you would not expect over 20% of our schools to be in the top 10%. So we've done a great job of meeting our students' needs at a faster rate than the rest of the state. And then these schools listed on this slide are those that not only exceeded growth this year, but they actually exceeded growth two years in a row. Finally, I wanted to share some perspective about those largest 12 districts. The large 12 districts, you either want to be growing at a fast rate as far as your scores, increasing relative to your peers, or achieving a high mark. Most districts would want to be at the top of one of these two charts. Cabarrus County Schools is at the top of both of the charts. So this is, again, the largest 12 districts. Cabarrus County Schools is second in growth, and then second in percent of A and Bs in your school performance grades. And then finally, to get into some numbers about what creates these growth and proficiency, I'm sorry, growth and achievement scores. The major piece is proficiencies, which is the EOG and the EOC tests. Again, this is a federally mandated program that is used to calculate some of these school performance grades. This slide shows the proficiency rates over time. So you were probably likely familiar that in 2021, our scores dropped due to the pandemic. Coming out of the pandemic, the state of North Carolina improved their scores and has largely flatlined in the years ever since. Cabarrus County Schools had one of the largest increases in scores that we've had with a 2% jump this past year. That was across both reading and math. The state of North Carolina did not see that jump, but Cabarrus County Schools did. This is one of the highest proficiency ranks we've ever had. I'll get to more on that in a future slide. This provides some perspective on what's happened in those largest 12 districts over the last six years. And so, as you can see, some school districts have flatlined over time. Cabarrus County Schools had a significant jump. You can see the ranking in the far-right column. So we were 63.7% proficient. Again, the state average was 55% proficient. That 63.7% proficient would put us seventh in the state of North Carolina. We have never been ranked above the top 15 before. I think last year, we were ranked 15th. It's on a future slide. It was either 14th or 15th, and now we're ranked up to seventh. You can see we've kind of separated ourselves from most of that group. We're up there with Union and Wake County now. And then this slide shows our proficiency compared to the other counterparts in our region. So again, kind of separated ourselves from the pack, and we like to compare ourselves to Union County as a point of reference. This slide shows our ranking over time that I just alluded to. So across all tested subjects in 2022, '23 school year, we were pretty excited to share that we were 14th. That was one of the highest rankings we'd ever had. The next year, we were ranked 15th across all tested subjects, and this year, we were ranked seventh. The column to the far right shows our ranking across each of the different tested subjects. You can see that we're somewhere in the top 10 range in many tested subjects. The next two slides are going to show how students fare over time. So this slide is used to share, to give perspective on following a cohort of students over time. So imagine that the third graders in the 2021 school year were 50% proficient in Cabarrus County Schools. I believe this chart is in reading. The purpose of this slide is to show that we can track those students as they progress through the grades. So if they were third graders in the '21 school year, they would have been fourth graders in the '22 school year, and then fifth graders in the '23 school year. So I've color-coded the next slide by student cohort so that you can track those students. Keep in mind, we have a lot of students that move into our district and out of our district each year. So it's not always the exact same 2,500 students. There's some variation, but it's helpful to track across time. This slide shows our reading proficiency by cohort. So if you track the purple group, for instance, it shows the students that just completed sixth grade. If you track the green cohort, it follows the students that just completed seventh grade and so on. So I feel like this is a very exciting slide to see. Our students vary consistently in third grade are around 50, 52, 53% proficient. When you look at our kindergarten, first, and second-grade students, which we do not have testing data on from the state of North Carolina because there's no required test, our students in kinder, first, and second grade are very close to the national average. They come in basically at the 50 to 52nd percentile, depending on the year. That tracks in third grade. They're always about 50% proficient, but by the time they've been with us for a year or two years or three years, we typically push them up to about 65% proficient. We do have a second assessment that we give specifically in those kinder through fifth-grade years that tells us the exact same story. Our average, our middle-of-the-road student in Cabarrus County comes in at 50%, at the 50th percentile. Within three years of being in our school system, they're typically in the 75th percentile. This proficiency chart tells much of the same story. So exciting to see each of those cohorts typically grow. There are some years where you'll see a slight dip, but you can see that '24, '25 school year, a lot of increases from when they began with us in third grade. This next slide is the exact same information but for math. Typically, math across the state of North Carolina in third grade is a little bit higher for whatever reason. And that follows similarly in Cabarrus County Schools. Again, there are some places that have had a dip, but for the most part, if you follow that green track, for instance, they started off at 53% proficient, and they've increased every year to land at 62% proficient over time. There are a few places where our proficiency dipped this past year. We recognize that would be the case back in May. And our schools write school improvement plans every year, specifically focusing on a target area. This year, we chose for our middle schools eighth-grade math. You can see where the proficiency had a slight dip. So we knew this back in May. Schools began in June writing plans to address whatever issues or discrepancies that we felt like they needed to address. This slide shows some proficiency highlights. So Northwest Cabarrus Middle School improved their proficiency by over 20%. Rocky River, Harrisburg, and Roberta Road also increased by 6% to 8% proficient. And then in high school, our Performance Learning Center increased their proficiency by 14%. Early College of Technology by 6.8%. Concord High School and JM Robinson High School also had large proficiency gains. And then also wanted to share a few more metrics related to the school performance grades, specifically graduation and then college and career readiness. So this chart shows our graduation rate over time. In the 2020 and the '21 school years, the state of North Carolina experienced its highest graduation rate ever. Graduation, the rules pertaining to graduates were changed in those two years to give, to understand students, different situations during the pandemic. So the state of North Carolina had a large bump then. This year, we exceeded our graduation rate, the highest graduation rate we've had in the history of Cabarrus County Schools. We exceeded even the '20 and '21 school years, which I'm not sure many of us thought we'd be able to get back up to this quickly. You can see we're moving, we're increasing faster than the state of North Carolina is increasing. And again, this is the highest mark we've got in recorded history. This slide shows several schools that either met their highest mark or met a mark that we cannot, that we should be really proud of. So Cabarrus Early College of Technology, Cabarrus County, Cabarrus Kannaplis Early College, Cox Mill High School, and Northwest Cabarrus High School all had a graduation rate greater than 95%. Some of those were 100%. The largest graduation rate increases were Concord High School moving up by 5.5%, West Cabarrus increasing their rate by 4.2%, and then the PLC increasing their rate by 2.4%. And then we also have these other school performance highlights. English learner progress is the percent of students in that school that are classified as English learners. They are given an assessment called the ACCESS test. The state gives them a score based on their incoming proficiency level. They have a score that they've got to meet by the end of the year to either be on, to meet progress or to exit the program. Last year, we were at 29.7% of our students either making progress or exiting the program. You can see that that jumped to 37.9%, which is a significant increase in our English learner program. Our ACT qualifying score also increased by 11%. And then the Work Keys Assessment is a measure of career readiness. Any student that has a career and technical pathway concentrator course is offered that Work Keys Assessment. And you can see that our proficiency increased on that by 5% as well. Finally, we have some school-specific highlights to share related to these same metrics. Bogart Elementary and Cox Mill Elementary are both ranked at the top of the state, 12th overall in English learner progress. Over 80% of their students met progress or exited the program. Cabarrus Early College of Technology ranked 33rd in the state out of 548 schools in their ACT ranking score. Almost 95% of their students met a qualifying score on the ACT. And then Cabarrus Early College of Technology and also the Kannaplis, Cabarrus Kannaplis Early College were both ranked in the top 40 in the combination of college and career readiness. Finally, I just wanted to share some information on subgroups. So questions often arise of, are there students, or are there types of students, or are there groups of students that are performing at a higher rate than others? The state of North Carolina provides all of this information as well. So this shows our overall ranking on each of the assessments that the state tracks. You can see our, all EOGs, all end-of-course, all end-of-grade exams were ranked sixth in the state of North Carolina. Across math, we're ranked 10th, and across reading, we're fifth. The next two slides break this down by the demographics that the state of North Carolina monitors. So the first slide tracks how different subgroups of students did. So our academically-intellectually gifted students, how they ranked in the state of North Carolina, how our economically disadvantaged students rank, how our English learners rank, our homeless learners, and then our students with disabilities. Each of these rankings are comparing those students to their same counterparts across the state of North Carolina. So our AIG students across all EOGs rank first when compared to other academically-intellectually gifted students across the state of North Carolina. And then this slide shows how our students, based on their ethnicity, fare compared to their counterparts across the state of North Carolina. I've highlighted in green those areas that we have decided to make a focus for this school year. So whereas we rank in the top 10 of most metrics across the state of North Carolina, there are a few places that we are not ranked in the top 10. We did not know exactly what our ranking would be until September, but we knew based on historical data that high school math won, that eighth-grade math, and that the ACT Work Keys would likely be opportunities. So again, our school leaders come together in the summer to plan for the following year. We provided them data, research, best practices around these topics so that they could come up with a plan for this school year to address exactly that. Overall, we were incredibly excited to see how Cabarrus County Schools are doing. I can't, you know, what I just now talked about was a whole lot of data points. I would like for you just to recall that there's a teacher behind each one of these data points. There's staff members, whether it's an administrator, whether it's a counselor, whether it's a differentiation or interventionist that's helping students change their trajectories. We have unbelievable systems in place to help meet students' needs, and just wanted to share some really exciting news with you that we are moving up in state rankings, that our schools are performing at a higher rate, that we're achieving high marks, but that we're also growing students at a faster rate than much of the rest of the state of North Carolina.
The few schools that have a D or specifically an F, what's the process on getting them up to speed? Like, do you guys put them on like a probation, or is there a process to get them up to speed?
So for us, when we identify, when we get the, I want to point out to the Commissioners and the community, this is great news, and we're very excited by it. But there's a lot of data points that we use to measure how kids are doing successfully or otherwise. This is a snapshot at the, you know, the testing that they took according to the state assessments. There are a plethora of other data points that we use to assess kids to see how they're doing, okay? So it doesn't tell the whole story. It tells a great part of the story, and it is exciting because it does demonstrate that our kids are achieving at high levels and that our teachers are doing tremendous work in the classroom. But to your point, what we do is we take this information, a lot of the other data points. I don't like the letter grade, I'm going to be very honest with you, because I don't think it's a fair assessment of a school. I don't think any school in this county is an F school, but there's a metric that they use that labels a school, right? I think socioeconomic play a lot into it, and we could talk about that for hours, right? But for us, when we get the data back, every school, not just the schools that they identify as low-performing or F schools, but every school of our 44 schools has a school improvement plan. And we look at the data, and we start that back, and Carl alluded to, we kind of know in May before, after the kids take the test, we have a general idea of how they've done preliminarily. So we take that information, when we go, when the school year ends, we sit with all administrators and the principals and the school improvement teams. We develop models of where the school is weak and where it needs to work on the next year to continue to improve. Beginning of the year, we then do data assessments, and we sit with every school. We go through, we call them data digs. And we rip through all the data, not just this, but all the data that the school has on every single child, and then we set goals. And those school improvement goals are things that we assess and we monitor over the course of the year. We have benchmark assessments that take place three times during the school year. So we look at those benchmarks, and we compare them to see how they're doing against the goals that we have established. And I can tell you, generally speaking, that what we focus on, we do really well with in terms of those data digs. Both of those schools will be out of low-performing, will not be identified as F schools next year. I'm very confident in that. One of the schools that is labeled an F school this year exceeded growth the year prior. There were some, there were some things that occurred during the year that were variables that, to be very frank and honest with you, we didn't account for, that kind of caught us by surprise. And we're much more aware of this year that we will assess and make sure that that doesn't happen next year. But I'm very confident that- But I'm very confident that we will, we will not see that same trend next year, which for me is incredibly encouraging because I think that's only, that's only going to increase these numbers if everything else stays the same. And all I've seen since I've been here is continuous improvement and tremendous work ethic of our teachers, administrators. And I also must say our parents, our parents' support and the work that they do with their kids as well. So, I think that collaboration, that partnership has done us very well here in the county.
And I'll never miss an opportunity. They were up there multiple times. But the PLC is such a needed resource for this community. I wish we had four or five more of them. I know you brought up the graduation rate was, was one of the best. And without that school, I think it's important, everybody knows that, without that school, that wouldn't be the case. That school has saved so many kids from dropping out. And so, I'll never miss an opportunity to go on record and fight for that school because they are amazing.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think that's another example of the collaboration that the county commissioners have worked with us and the school system to provide it. You built it. Our kids are taking advantage of it and it's serving, it's serving our community extremely well. And you see the academic results of what's happening there. So, it's exciting to see those kids continue to achieve at high rates.
I just wondered, you know, you mentioned about the A, B, C, D, F, et cetera rating. I wondered, does that have more to do with differentiation between one school and some others rather than how that individual school's doing? I mean, based more on a comparison than on just the raw figures for that particular school?
The growth formula is 20% of that formula, and the growth is a zero-sum game. So, as some students, some schools receive an exceeding growth measure, like I said, almost again, that go back to that analogy of running a race. As some schools pass, then they're going to get an exceeding score. And then as some schools get passed, they're going to receive a not-meeting-growth score. So, it is absolutely a comparison between schools. That constitutes about 20% of the formula. So, it is certainly there. Typically, Cabarrus County schools, we, you know, can, we outperform the state in that metric. So, it largely helps us, but there are some schools that did not meet growth.
So, it's not necessarily that they aren't making progress. It's compared to other schools.
That's exactly right. Good catch. So, I mean, you could, we track throughout the year, Dr. Picky mentioned benchmarks. Each student is given a projection. The student's projected in the 90th percentile. That student's projected in the 50th percentile. A student making the 50th percentile or the 51st percentile may not classify as exceeding growth if the rest of the state increases their score even more. So, sometimes it is, but and again, Cabarrus County schools largely does a better job of that than the rest of the state.
On the math part, I brought this up before and bring it up again, that when I was in the state's house, we, we passed a law requiring that the schools teach multiplication tables as well as cursive writing. We found they weren't doing it across the state. Most schools were not doing it. So, we passed another law to enforce that. I'm wondering, where's Cabarrus County in that? Are we complying with that law? Because I think compliance with that law would help with the math scores.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, it's, we teach all of the standards that North Carolina prescribes. The benchmark assessments and the other assessments that we get track students across those standards. We are literally taking a benchmark assessment right now. I can't tell you if that particular standard is on this benchmark assessment, but what our schools will do is dig into those numbers and see which standard students outperformed or underperformed and go back and address them. But multiplication tables, cursive writing, and any other standards in the state of North Carolina, we are, we are teaching and assessing.
Okay. Well, I hope so because it's the law.
Congratulations. I was, I was so excited to see all of these slides. And I, I know that it's been such a struggle for the last couple of years, especially after COVID and, and all of the things that we had to go through with that. So, I'm, I'm excited to see that the academics piece is, you know, and I, and I agree with you completely on the letter grade. And obviously, that doesn't tell the whole picture of the school. But it is, it is really nice to see us to be able to move up on those scales again and be back to where we were before, before all of that happened. So, I'm, I'm really proud of y'all.
Well, we thank all of you for your support. And before we leave, I will say that we preach continuous improvement. So, we're thrilled with these results. We hope to come back here next year and tell you even better news that we continue to improve and we, we're not resting on our laurels. We want to keep getting better and better and keep pushing the envelope. So, I thank you for your support. I thank our community, our parents, and everyone, our teachers, administrators for the work that they're doing. And it's exciting. We have a great school system. We're going to continue to try and make it better. So, thank you for your support.
I want to thank you and your teachers and your staff because that's what makes it possible. So, we've got some great teachers out there, so let's keep them.
Yes, sir. To my left, and you're about to meet others here too, you see the excellence that I work with every day. So, you have great people working in our system. So, I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. All right, we'll move on to items for action. The first one is 4.1, finance for Cabarrus County schools, a change in the use of allocated funds for maintenance. Jim Houghton, is he coming up? Yeah, there he is.
I'm here, but it's, it's these gentlemen.
Okay.
We'll kick off and we'll, we'll take it from there.
Good evening, commissioners. As you see, Cabarrus County is here. One of the things we do every year, of course, is approve their budget for deferred maintenance. And the process that we do is the schools break it down into various categories. Those deferred maintenance projects under $25,000, those 25 to 500,000, and those over 500,000. One of the things we did this year is we approved $10.1 million in deferred maintenance projects, but we picked them only in the one category. We did their top 36 just from 50,000 to 200, or to 500,000, I'm sorry, 25,000 to 500,000. And didn't really look at projects that were greater priced than that, larger projects that may be more important than the ones we picked. So, schools have come back, and Phil and Chuck will talk about that. And we'd like to tweak some of those projects to make sure we're getting the projects that are the most important and the ones that need to be done, top priority-wise, regardless of what that value was. Now, the overall budget does not change. It's still 10.1 million. We're not changing that. We just want to tweak it between some of the projects.
Sure. So, one of the things that the ongoing conversation we've been having with the county sort of exposed in this process is, you know, we've always broken down these projects by their dollar value, which ties pretty closely to whether, how they're funded, right? You know, so it was pay-as-you-go projects. Some of these are debt sponsored projects. But we were never really asked to put together a combined list, right? Take, take the two lists, put them together and figure out what your top priority is between them. And that's something we're going to accomplish in this next budget cycle as we go forward. So, just to get a sense of what would be $500,000 or greater, parking lot replacements, roof replacements, HVAC replacements. You'll see things that are sort of 25 to 499, classroom renovations, repairs of a parking lot. And then there's other minor things that we do in the, in the less than 25,000. But the two buckets that we were really referring to tonight is that 25 to 499 and the 500,000 and higher. I'm not going to take you through all these because frankly, they were presented as part of the budget process earlier. But you'll see at the bottom of the second page, the 10.1 million that we're referring to. So, again, to keep hitting the punchline, what we're asking for tonight is a change in the mix of projects, but not a change in the appropriation that you've given to us for the maintenance work, right? Second piece of this then would be, what were the bigger projects that were part of this going forward? And it was a lengthy list that was there with a value of 42 million. So, with the, Chuck Taylor, who's our director of facilities, and his team went back and sort of put together a hybrid list between those to say, if we were to look at those two lists together, what would they look like? And I don't think Chuck is going to take you through all these in total. There's a lot of detail that we provided in advance of the meeting. But Chuck, maybe you could talk about how your team went through sort of picking and choosing between the two lists with the higher priority ones were.
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. When we started working on this hybrid list, what we focused on is what we have always said. We need three roofs, three parking lots, and three HVAC replacements every year. I've consistently said that the entire time I've been with Cabarrus County schools. So, we took a look at this list. The 25 to 499 items are essential. The over 500,000 items are critical. So, what we wanted to do was blend this. And we took a look at what we could accomplish within that $10 million on the over 500 category. We're keeping, as you can see, the same three roofs that were listed that we asked for in the CIP, two partial HVAC replacements. What we're wanting to do there is replace the chillers and the controls. So, if you think about it, if that, if that HVAC system was a person, we're doing a brain transplant, we're doing a heart transplant. It's still an old person, but we've replaced the vital organs. And then when it comes to the parking lot, it's kind of the same thing. That infrastructure is in desperate need of replacement. And if we don't cycle through these, that's when our costs continue to become astronomical. The sooner we tackle these things, the better. And we're trying to find you a way to use that same money to increase our efficiency by reducing the amount of operational maintenance on a daily basis. Any questions? I'm sorry.
It continues on to the same, to the second list of projects. You'll see now some of the smaller ones that came out of that original top 36. Again, the total value, what we're proposing is the same 10.1 million, so no additional monetary impact to the, to the county. You know, so we want to make sure that we're being clear. You know, a hybrid mix is what we're going to be proposing going forward between those two. You know, it just makes sense from budgetary process, you know, leveraging the expertise of Chuck and his team, where they really know the building maintenance better than frankly, anybody else in the district, gives us a chance to sort of make sure that we're maximizing the reduction in the number of assets that are out of lifecycle system-wide, right? That's the overall goal. We're responsible for about $2.8 billion with a B of property that we maintain. So, this ongoing maintenance work is critical to our success and making sure that we're giving the kids what they deserve when they walk in the building each day. We're happy to take questions.
Chuck, how much, I know it varies, and I've probably asked you this already, but one HVAC system, one roof, and one parking lot, rough, just very rough. We talking 15 million, we talking 7 million, like where, where are we looking at for? Because I know, we've talked before.
Right.
Three, three, and three, that's a lot of money. But it would be nice, coming up since budget starts, if we can at least put a framework in to guarantee one, one and one, and then another board if they wish later on can improve. Because we're always going to fall behind if we don't start. So, roughly 1, 1, and 1, just very rough.
Roughly somewhere between 13 and 15 million.
I just want to say, I wish we could do it all at once. You know, I hate you having to prioritize and break things up like this, but I appreciate you being willing to do it because, you know, we ain't going to make it otherwise. So, I hope we can go ahead and move forward with some of the most essential stuff and try to get the others soon as we can. I think this is a reasonable proposal to try to handle it the way you're trying to do. And again, I hope we can get it all done eventually, but I appreciate you putting some real thought into this.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
So, like I told you, Phil, at the finance meeting, I truly think, in all honesty, this is probably the way we should have been doing it most likely all along. I'm happy that we were finally able to kind of figure out that this is the best, most efficient way to do all of this. But, you know, you guys know these schools. I mean, Chuck, you know these schools better than anybody. You guys should be the ones to decide how you want to spend this money. And, and it doesn't matter to me how much each one of the specific items costs. We'll, we'll give you the money. Use it how you best see fit for the school system. I'm just glad that we finally figured out, maybe this will help with some of our deferred maintenance because it just keeps getting bigger and bigger every year. So, so thank you guys for putting the thought behind this, like Commissioner Pittman said. And, and I, I hope we can make some real dents into the deferred maintenance that we have as a system.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. We have a motion to spin rules procedures. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, pass 4-0. All right. And we have a motion to accept the changes of allocation.
So, move.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass 4-0. All right.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
We will make it count.
Okay, we're next moving on to active living in parks, ordinance amendment.
I was just going to ask a quick question. Commissioner Shu is not online, is he?
No.
Okay.
No.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to talk about a creative and maybe new way to, to serve the people of Cabarrus County. So, the proposed ordinance amendment is to seek approval for the sale of alcohol at county-sponsored events only. Specifically, or not so specifically, just to give us the opportunity for a new event that my esteemed colleague Dominique Clark came forward with last year. Just specifically, this is only for those events that are ours or that we are helping run. So, county-sponsored, this is not for a wedding at the barn or a beer truck at a birthday reservation at Franklin's Park. This is, this is only for ours, and we'll follow very strict guidelines on where it can be sold, how it can be sold, and where it can be consumed. So, now I'm going to kick it to Dominique with our award-winning communications and outreach department to talk about.
I like it.
The event that, that kind of brought this forward.
Yes, so, good evening, everybody. So, in comms, we have this thing called Big Idea Friday. And so, that's our time to bring our creative and unique ideas to the table and how we want to push our efforts forward as a department. And so, that could be a social media campaign, that could be a video series, a press release. And so, I had the bright idea to do a countywide festival. And I got really excited about the idea of bringing something to the county that I hadn't seen done before. Something that I think we could be proud of. And by we, I mean as a resident of Cabarrus County, as a community member, the community could be proud of. Something that highlights the best of who we are, from our charm to agriculture, which would be a big part of this event. Something that showcases community connection and culture. And so, we brought this idea to outs and they were excited about it and got on board. And so, we realized in doing our research, in order for an event like this, well, not in order, but we've seen a lot of successful events like this at this scale have the sale and consumption of alcohol contribute to their success. And so, we know to produce an event at this magnitude, that this is a step that we would have to take forward. And so, we're coming to you for your approval. We know that there's a lot of information that would have to be gathered, a lot of research that would have to be done. So, we look forward to continuously coming before you, sharing our ideas, getting your thoughts and input on how we can truly make something special for the citizens of Cabarrus County with this event.
And we have the full, well, the recommendation from the Active Living in Parks Commission was to get your guidance before we got to, let's say, deep in the weeds in planning something like this. You know, and after meeting with risk and safety and infrastructure and asset management, we're looking at Franklin's Park for this event, and the second entrance is paramount for its success and safety. So, this is, while it's not a right-now event, we kind of need to know where we're going with it. And to kind of fulfill Dominique and our vision for the, for the event, this is an integral part of that without having to reframe that, that structure.
Mr. Chairman, after speaking with Commissioner Shu earlier today, I'm going to move this be removed from our agenda.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Any seconds? All right, have a second, a motion.
I just, I know from being at the meetings, as the liaison, the amount of work you guys have already put into this, talking with the Cheerwine Festival, Jiggy with the Piggy is gone. From my understanding, I think Barbe Brew.
That's right.
Might also be gone. So, this would absolutely fill that void that's going to be in both Kannaplas and Harrisburg and put it central to Cabarrus County. I think it's. I think it's a great idea, and I appreciate the fact that you want to control it as much as you can and keep it to Cabarrus County only. I think that would eliminate a lot of the problems that we would see if it were at the barn for a wedding, and I appreciate you guys not wanting to go full into that. But I fully support it. I talked to Commissioner Shu, I know he was adamantly opposed to it, but I fully support it, and I know you need the direction so that you guys can start planning. It's going to take over a year to plan. So I'm okay with it. That's where I stand, I'm okay with it, and I support it.
Would you all like to move it to an action item on the next meeting, so Mr. Shu and Mr. Pittman here?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think it should be on action.
I would leave it on consent.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, take it off consent, we'll just put it as an action item for our next meeting.
They still need a little bit of guidance as to where, like, we all stay on.
So I had a couple of questions. I mean, I get it, you guys are in the infancy stages of all of this. Was it a, is there a time of year that you were kind of looking at? Fall. Fall? Yeah. How do you think that that would resource-wise affect the fair? Because the fair kind of is in the fall, too, and so I know that a lot of our county employees are real focused on that piece of it, so I just didn't know if that would kind of take away from...
We were looking at least a month, if not five or six weeks after the fairs.
Yeah, it would be at the end of October, and as comms and communications, we're a big part, well, this year was our first year, being a big part of the marketing efforts for the fair. And as a team, we collectively decided that we would have the capacity to promote and make this thing happen, and so.
Yeah, because it was, I mean, the fair was great this year, so I don't want to see, you know, kind of that backslide so that we're focused on this instead, but if we can do both, that would be amazing.
And the thing about this is that we would create a committee that would be solely focused on producing this event. One of the other great things about this is that, for those who don't know, collaboration is one of the values of Cabarrus County, and so it would allow us to collaborate across departments and also with other organizations throughout the community to help make this thing happen. So we wouldn't solely be relying on our own efforts as an outs and communications department, but we'd have others involved who are also excited about making this thing happen.
Just leaning on the skill sets that make our other events through Active Living in Parks and our efforts with communication, just highlighting those and taking advantage of the talent we have, whether you look at Touch a Truck or the Active Living Expo, where we are able to bring in revenue to offset or even raise revenue for the, to cover the cost of the event and then some for the county, just on a much larger scale, and the opportunity to have the level of live music that we're looking at for the event and the revenue, potential revenue could be a big win and...
Do you have, and again, I'm not holding you to any of these numbers, but I assume that you guys, especially with Kannapolis being so close by and the sales that they had had those years with Jiggy with the Piggy and that kind of stuff, do you have an idea of how much revenue alcohol sales specifically might bring in?
I don't have that information.
The numbers would come from the actually, the amount of vendors we would be able to draw. So the, I would imagine the beer and wine vendors will be a small percentage of the actual vendors, but you're selling the other local businesses, artisans, craftsmen on this event that's going to bring in thousands of people for them to sell their goods. So you're not just getting the beer and the wine, you're going to get the buy-in from all of the local businesses that are in attendance.
Well, I can just say personally for myself, I'm not a big drinker anymore, but I also am certainly not opposed, I said anymore. I'm not opposed to those around me that like to partake in a beer or two for their enjoyment. So, and I do think that being to some events in Kannapolis where they have sold alcohol there as well, it has, you have to have a wristband, you can't take it off of the premises. It's been incredibly strict, and I don't have any reason to doubt that we would be able to pull it off in the same way. So I personally don't have an issue with it as well, so I don't know how Commissioner Jones feels.
I don't have anything personally against it. I am not a drinker, never have been, so, but I don't mind other people choose what they want to do. Right now, I'm not opposed to it, but I have not talked to Larry or Lynn about what their reasons are. I'll do that privately outside of this when we come back. I at least want to have given the respect, listen to them, they may jog something in, but right now, I'm not opposed to it.
Awesome.
Mr. Chairman. I'm not a teetotaler. I drink a little wine with certain meals, have a little wine in my eggnog at Christmas. But just so you know, a bottle of wine lasts me over a year, okay? I just feel that it's inappropriate for the county to promote alcohol consumption, so I just don't think any of our events should have that in it.
All right, so we'll just put it on action item for the regular agenda next meeting. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is the Coldwater Fire Apparatus Certificate of Need. Mr. Jacob Thomas. There you are.
Howard.
Come on up.
So tonight, we've got a pretty routine item. So Coldwater Fire Department recently placed an order for an apparatus, and through that process, they ordered a second truck to replace a current engine. So we did miss the process in that of the required certificate of need by contract. However, we do feel like the purchase is justified. So a matter of formality, we wanted to bring it to you, make sure you had the opportunity to ask any questions, make sure you were informed, and to check the box of the contract. So I turn it over to Coldwater, if they have any contextual information about the purchase they'd like to offer. Other than that, that's pretty much it.
So do y'all have the letter we sent?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Benjamin Brady with the Coldwater Fire Department, and I've been there for 16 years now. I'm a captain. I'm the head of our apparatus committee, I'm also a current board of director for the Coldwater Fire Department. As you can read here, we're under contract for a 2028 Pierce Enforcer fire engine for $1,040,000. The engine is replacing a current 1997 Pierce engine that has serviced greatly. It will be 31 years old once the new engine arrives. The 97 engine lacks modern safety features such as rollover airbags that modern fire apparatus have, parts to replace anything on it are harder to find. We recently had to put an ECM on it, which was a computer, basically, which was a lot harder to find. The NFPA 1900 recommends that fire apparatus be used in a frontline capacity for 15 years, a reserve capacity for the next five to 10, and then recommends any apparatus over 25 years old should be replaced. This apparatus meets all requirements set forth by the state regarding automatic aid response of having 1,000 gallons of water and required non-ice equipment. The Coldwater Board of Directors unanimously made the decision on March 11, 2024, to move forward with purchasing this fire engine, which is very similar to one we took delivery of in April of 2024. The fire chief signed the contract with Atlantic Emergency Solutions, who's the contractor and dealer from the state of North Carolina for Pierce manufacturing. Another factor in the decision was the lead times to get a new fire apparatus is currently around four years. It took our previous truck two and a half years, so we felt the need to go ahead and move forward with this. And I'm going to go on the record and say I'm not 100% why I have to be here to explain this to the commissioners, nothing against anybody here, but I feel that this is a decision of my board of directors, not of the county commission.
So I was actually going to ask the same question. I don't really understand why we're voting on something that was already ordered and, you know, you guys have already approved, like, I don't...
Correct. The commission, y'all levy our fire tax for the fire tax district of Cabarrus County and of all the rural departments, and y'all, we sign for our budget every year. But the certificate of need, I've never seen in person. I do not know what this is. And I also want to point out, record, the last signed contract we have with Cabarrus County providing fire service to Cabarrus County is from 2014, which is 11 years ago. But we also sign a contract every single year for $30,000 in contract money for staffing, and we have that from 2006 to 2025, it's signed every single year. Why is a contract for fire protection not signed every year? Our current one states that we collect fire tax at 6 cent on the dollar. Our current fire tax rate is 8 cent on the dollar, so it is inaccurate.
So do we have signed ones for every fire station in Cabarrus County that are up to date?
The contract is perpetual. The original contract that was signed, I have Allen's, for example, because it's the first one in the list, and it was signed 2016, July of 2016 is when those were renewed.
Who was the chief of Allen then?
I can't make out the signature, but Michael Fager.
I can bet.
Michael Fager was still the president.
You're in the board president's name.
Board president is still the same as it is today.
But the chief ain't.
No.
So a couple of items for clarity here. The original contract that was signed in 2016 is perpetual contract. Once it's signed, it's permanent until such time either the county or the department chooses to terminate that contract. So we, as the county, could at any time come to the departments and say, we want to change the contract, and then renew that contract. If we wanted to place this contract on a perpetual or on a yearly basis like the staffing grant contract is, then we could do that. That's simply provision change, and then, but we have to go back through the process, it has to go up for public hearing, all the departments have to sign it, and we have to change that contract. So as far as the certificate of need, I can provide you all the ones I have given or given out to departments since I've been here, including the one that was given to Coldwater for the first engine that they purchased. But our current contract states, any fire apparatus purchases exceeding $50,000, command and utility vehicles excluded, and all air pack purchases must be approved by the county fire marshal's office prior to purchase. The department must receive a certificate of need from the county fire marshal's office for the proposed apparatus. Justification documents submitted to the county fire marshal for review include demonstrated need for the new purchase, as well as a distribution plan for any apparatus being replaced. That is in our contract, so in order to be compliant with that contract, a certificate of need has to be issued. That is the whole purpose that we're here. If we want to have this removed, then we can change the contract and have it removed, but we need to have the understanding at that point that we are giving up, for whatever reason this was originally placed in this contract, we're giving up the ability to say yea or nay on these purchases that sometime exceed over a million dollars.
Well, I tell you what, it comes from Steve Langford.
It came from a previous administration. Why are we still doing stuff from a previous administration? Why is there, there has been little to no change. We have changed administration completely, but there's been little to no change at all from what we previously did to what we do now.
And that contract right there is from 2016.
2016.
The most recent one we can find is from 2014, and we have records back to 1985.
So what we need to do is look at those contracts and see if we need to amend them, but right now, we're under that contract, so we got to abide by it. So we can talk about amending it and doing something in the future.
Some stuff needs to be fixed, in such as our tax rate is wrong in it, I mean...
The 2016 version of the contract doesn't cite a tax rate.
I would like to see us update the contracts every year. There's different people on the boards that change out. I would like to see us updated every year. And according to the 2011 school government, it says there's often confusion as to who controls the district. The district's governing board, the county board of commissioners, or the fire department's governing board. Practical answer is that all three have some degree of control. The county board of commissioners sets the tax rate and determines how services will be provided in the district. And then from there, their board of directors, so from my understanding, once we set the fire tax rate, which we did at budget time, we approve their money. So it's up to their board of directors, and it should be up to you, the fire marshal who reviews their financials as to if they can afford the fire truck. Because my problem is, is if you come here and ask us to approve a fire truck, and for some reason we say no, that you already ordered a year ago, then if that truck breaks down the next way on the way to, the next day on the way to a fire and somebody dies, that's on us, when in reality, that's, it's your job to review their financials, correct? And everything that goes with that?
We can be sued at any time for anything.
Yeah, we send a monitor every year.
Yeah, we have a third-party audit done every year on our finances.
Because we contract with the department, we, as the county, are liable at any time for anything. If they fail, if they negligence, gross negligence, whatever, there's a lot of definitive language in general statute that talks about gross negligence versus negligence, and whether or not there's qualified immunity for fire app, or for fire service in North Carolina for negligence or for things that happened that shouldn't have. Where it projects over into gross negligence is where things are done that 100% were preventable or were known and nothing was done about it. In those situations, in any situation, we still stand that at any time, as a county, we can be sued for anything, and it's up to a judge and through litigation to determine whether or not we've reached that gross negligence threshold.
But then why wouldn't you make the decision? Why are we making the decision?
So the whole purpose that we started bringing these to you was because we had the continual information from that, the special call meeting, that we were not providing enough information, there wasn't, you weren't informed about Allen's fire truck purchase, weren't informed about the station situations. And so now we're here providing this information, we're here going through these steps to make sure that you have that information, and now we're getting the opposite, and we're getting kicked back for bringing it here. So I just want clarity.
I don't have a problem with you sending it to us, but I think it's a waste of these men's time for a truck that they ordered. It says the chief signed it on March 14, 2024?
Yeah, March 14.
For me, we, I know you've got things to do tonight, I know you've got things to do tonight, and I don't want to see other chiefs have to come here to approve a fire truck. For my opinion, I can't speak for the rest of you, I was good when I set your tax rate. You know, you guys came in, every single department came in, and they said, we want our tax rate raised for personnel and radios. Where my problem's going to come in is next year when they come back and say, we need personnel and radios, then I want to see what you spent your money on, because I already gave you a tax rate so that you could provide it, but I don't want to be over every single fire truck purchase that they have. That's on their board of directors.
So you would like us to remove that provision from the contract?
You can email, yeah.
And you want to...
And I want a new contract signed every year. I think that that's, that's more than, things change, we change a fire rate, a fire tax rate every year.
We need to look at, we need to look at the contracts and see...
My next question is, okay, we've had the conversation about apparatus, now we've also had the conversation about the approval of fire stations.
Those are two totally different things.
Okay, do you want that in the contract as we begin this revision?
Do I want what part in the con? I think a new fire station we should talk about, because that causes possible, possible confusion and possible conflict with neighboring departments. Coldwater buying a fire engine isn't going to make Midland or Allen mad that it's their fire engine, but you talk about plopping a station somewhere 10, seven tenths of a mile from another station, that's going to cause some problems. So for me, it should be common sense, if it's a new station, let's talk about a new station, but I do not want to sit here and have to approve every fire truck that they need. I just don't, that's, I don't think that's what we should do.
In order to comply with this particular piece...
I understand what we have to do, because we're under this current contract.
So we will, Jacob will issue this certificate to get this resolved, so that we're not out of compliance with our contract, and then we can work on revising contracts and taking that out, but adding in the need to come to you for a fire station.
Yeah.
So right now, this is, I have a motion, put this on consent agenda, and then we can work on contracts.
Do we need a motion, or is it...
All right, we just put on...
Well, if y'all want to authorize him to go ahead with it, since this seems to be the consensus, we'll go ahead and issue it.
Okay, so we'll do... Mr. Chairman. You talking about do a consensus for the apparatus, or you talking about the contract?
Well...
That's what I'm...
So we can authorize Jacob to go ahead with the, get an apparatus done.
Okay, so we suspend the rules.
We will bring...
Motion to suspend the rules.
Well, I don't think we need to, I think Jacob can do it.
Are you sure?
Yeah, with the conversation that he has.
If he can do it.
This was an effort to make sure that everybody was on the same page about what communication needs to come forward. So what we can do is get a sample contract out to you all and let you look at it and decide whether or not that's what you want in that contract, and then we can circulate it to the departments to see how they feel about it.
But the thing about it is, the departments need to sign it, decide if it's good for us.
Yeah, it just said circulate it to you all, then to...
Y'all might not be good for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what needs to be reviewed by both parties, y'all and the fire departments, all 10 of them in this county that y'all govern.
Yeah, that's what I said, we'll get kind of some consensus here, we'll bring it back to you. If there's not changes in it, we can kind of negotiate that out and get that finalized.
But in the meantime, we're working under what we have, and we have to abide by what we have.
So Jacob will issue that.
Yeah, but there's probably only one chief out of every contract he's got that's a chief right now, so.
That's a fair fact.
So, and nobody on the county commissioners even, or the people that signed it from the counties even working here no more on every one of them. So to me, they're all no old bull.
Well, it's not unusual for us to have some forms of contracts that are perpetual, and once it's signed, it just stays that way until something changes.
Until it's changed. Well, every time somebody has a tax increase on their fire thing, well, that's a change, because ours is six and we're at eight. Not necessarily. Not necessarily. It depends on how the agreement's written, and I haven't reviewed the agreement. So, we'll look at that. So, we'll make sure. Because we don't want you to have to come every year to do it, but maybe we have to come every so often, year, two-year. We just have to look at the situation. Because if all y'all are gone next year, the other group might say, "Why are they on it? We're not on it."
Right. I mean, that's why they were the one signing every, if we sign one for $30,000 every year, why don't we sign one for the fire tax every year?
Yeah, I think...
I mean, what's the, what's the difference between the two?
I made it. With, with the perpetual piece, that was just a decision that was made in 2016 on how, I mean, that's, that's as simple as how you'd want to set up the contract. If, a lot of times they're set up perpetual if you don't see a lot of changes happening in the contract itself. Changes in the department leadership doesn't necessarily, yes, it would probably be best practice to update those every year so that the new chief and the new board, if there is a change in that, that they understand what the requirements of them are through that contract. But a lot of times what they've set up like is they're set up perpetual because a lot of the contents of the contract, they don't change year over year. Like, for example, we're in, from 2016, we're still working under the same contract. Are there some things that need to be updated? Probably so. But because there's just not a lot of change in the contract, they set them up as perpetual just to eliminate some of the administrative work that's done.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I think I'm in agreement with you. Correct me if I'm wrong. It seems to me if you have the authority to make the purchase, don't have to ask us to do it. I mean, you know...
Yes, sir. That's why I feel...
You just exercise that authority. You shouldn't have to have a certificate of need.
Yeah, it's my, my board of directors.
If that's in our current policy or contract or anything, we gotta do it now, but we need to get rid of that going forward.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement.
Every fire department has a board of directors. They have to answer to them.
Yeah, you shouldn't have to get a certificate of need from us if you've got the authority to do it start with.
And it doesn't matter to me because it's one less thing I have to do.
So, do we...
I think we're all in agreement on how it should be. We just have to get the documents in place.
Are there any others that you know of that will be?
I don't have any right now that I know of.
Okay, okay.
How long would it take to get the, what would it take to get, how long would it take to start the process and getting these contracts from there? Is it, when's it done?
So, I will say the old contracts we used to always get with our budget, and it took effect the fiscal year of July 1. Because you can, if you want to look, this is the 2014 signed contract that we have, and here's the 2013 one. I mean, they're almost identical, but they do say that we collect that six cents, which is inaccurate information as of present.
So, it would just be at budget time?
We can do it at budget time, but that, in, in essence, we would still be through July, or June 30th of next year, if there are any other apparatus that come up needing to approve that, to follow the contract. But we could, I mean, we can go ahead and do one at any point during the year if they want to do that, and update everybody's, and then just start July next year. It'll give us a little practice run to get everything cleaned up, and then if there's changes for the next fiscal year, we'll be ready to do that.
Yeah, and if y'all could do me a favor, look through the contract, and I can email you the 2016 version that's current, and just see if there's anything else in there that you might want to see come out or change, any wording in there that you might want to see, and so we can take that into account as we go through the process.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, I'd like to see us take this stick and certificate of need policy out as soon as possible.
I think we're all in agreement on that.
Just as soon as possible. Don't wait till next year.
I think we're in agreement, and the sooner the better. Okay? All right, anything else? Thank y'all.
Well, thank you for your time.
All right, next is the juvenile crime convention council resolution. Ms. Mopple, how you doing?
Good, how are y'all? Good evening, commissioners. I believe the resolution was included in your packet. I don't know if anybody has any questions about it, rather than me read it out loud, given it's a full page. It's not asking for any county funds. It's just asking that when the state does recurring funds, that they increase those funds for the juvenile programs.
All right, anybody got a question? We move to consent agenda.
All right, thank y'all. And I'll be available if there's any questions about our new seats.
All right, next is update on Holloway Group.
Thank you. You did ask that this be brought back up in October. From the last time that we discussed it, I did provide you all with a copy of the recent report that Mr. Holloway provided to us. The legislature's inactivity obviously has had some impacts on their ability to do much in the way of production. But this is the report, and just bringing it back up as it was instructed to do the last time we discussed it.
I've been talking, I'll go ahead and add to that. I've been talking to Mr. Holloway about this, and we're going through some conversations. I have put him in touch with Kelly. I think there's just more information we need to get before we can really make a decision on this. So, I'm all for tabling it and bringing it back up, maybe in November after we have more time to gather more information from him. He's been real receptive to us, and we've put a lot into it, and he's been, he's put a lot of work into it. I don't want to just throw it out the door until we have more conversations with him, find out where he is, and, and the likelihood of success with or without him. So, that's where I am on it.
Is there a way to pause that contract? Because right now, we're paying him to do nothing while they're not...
Well, he is, he is still talking to people that are, when they're up there, he's still making the connections and keeping us in front of them. And, I mean, all y'all are welcome to call him one-on-one and discuss it with him as well, and let him tell you what he's doing and what he thinks the plan is.
I'm still in favor of terminating the contract. I was.
I know, I know. It's money going out. I just don't have enough information for me to make that decision right now.
Mr. Chairman, I've, knowing Brian personally, I served with him in the State House. I have a lot of trust in his ability and honesty and all that. And, I don't know, I think maybe while we're without a state budget, he might be able to do us some good where we wouldn't be able to get anywhere otherwise. So, I, I have thought myself about maybe pausing it, not getting rid of it, and I'm gonna try to call him and talk to him and see where he would be on that and what possibilities might be. But I just hate to leave ourselves without any representation up there, you know, so to speak. And he does have a good relationship with people in the legislature, so I think he would be still a good advocate for us. So, I'll talk to him and see if, if there's a way of like pausing it or something.
Okay. I appreciate all of you talking to him, get your fill for it, and so you can make your own line up.
Thank you.
And I'll just add to that, too, that it's actually even harder that they haven't passed a budget, because if they had passed a budget, or if they were close to passing a budget, that would make his life a heck of a lot easier. He wouldn't have to still keep getting in front of these people to remind them that Cabarrus County needs this money for Franklin's Park and for the animal shelter. And I'll just say, his track record in Raleigh is extremely good. We had, we, we used to have some that were like $5,000 a month that now it's $1,000 less. We've already put, we've invested $40,000. They were able to get Midland last year $11 million for the Muddy Creek plant. And he has 100% success rate with all of his people that he works with. So, I, I think because we've already invested 40,000, I hear you about tabling it, and I'm completely fine with that. I do want everybody to talk to him. But I have had the opportunity to talk to him, and I think they do a phenomenal job for us, and I really know how important it is for us to get this second interest of Franklin's Park to ASAP, so.
I have a question, and I'm gonna ask you because you were there. So, this question's not meant to be disrespectful. I generally want to know, but like, why are our House representatives not having these conversations? Why do we have to have that? You served, so is, why, what's the purpose in this compared to just our House members having these conversations?
Well, some of the stuff is kept pretty much confidential so that you don't have things getting out there in the public that aren't gonna happen, you know, that sort of thing. So, I think that may be a good bit of, you know, there's a struggle back and forth between sides up there, and just hadn't, hadn't worked things out yet. For, for my part, 2015, when I was there, we had a budget that was just full, or proposed budget, just full of wasteful stuff. And so, 30 of us got together, and we settled on 12 items. Everybody had different items. When we settled on 12 items, we went and taken out of the budget, and we told 10 more speaker, we weren't voting for it unless those were taken out. And, you know, they tried to get the budget done by June. Well, got to last week in September. He said, "If we don't vote on the budget by September 30th, we'll just do it out of new budget till next June." And he, but he did say, "Okay, we'll take eight of these 12 items out." Well, that was 75% of what we were after, and so we went ahead and voted for the budget with those items removed, and that was $420 million taken out of the budget. There's a lot of that stuff going on back and forth, and some people on one extreme and some on another, and you try to meet in the middle, and it just always, you know, it doesn't always happen.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna add to that, too, because I've learned a few things, and Raleigh doesn't work like any other place, literally, probably on earth, much less the state. But there's a hierarchy there, and we have three freshman House Representatives and Senator Meesmer there. And I think they are working on these things on our behalf, but unfortunately, when you're a freshman in Raleigh, you don't get the same ability to be able to speak to the folks that truly decide on this money and whether or not it's coming to each county. I, I'm not a huge fan. Every time I used to hear the word lobbyist, I thought, "Lord, what a, what a crock is that?" I've learned a lot since then. I also have realized that Raleigh is, it works in a crazy way. It's definitely not like this. And if we don't have somebody up there that knows who to talk to and knows where the money comes from to advocate on our behalf, chances are, we're not gonna get it. And I would hate to, if we pause this or cancel this contract, we would have to start all over. And so, when they pass a budget, let's say in March of '26, we're gonna be square one again. So, all of that money, we've already invested in trying to make these opportunities happen for Cabarrus County. We're not gonna, we're definitely not gonna get them.
I, just a little response to that. You're right, but at the same time, sometimes you ought to be bold in approaching people anyway. Like, you know, you might not want to talk to me, but I'm gonna talk to you, you know? And if I had not taken that attitude and gone to the people I needed to get, to go to, even though we didn't necessarily get along all the time, I went to them, and we started out talking about $4 million or $10 million for the new courthouse. And because I kept pushing, I got us $40 million. You know, you gotta be willing to talk to people you have to talk to, you know?
Anything else? So, we'll just table it for now. Take it off of everything. Okay? We're still a month to month with them, so it's still in place. Do we need to vote on that motion to table or no? I just want to make sure. Okay. Got you. All right. All right, now we're to boards and committees appointment. There's a home and community care block grant committee appointment. Anybody have a discussion on that? All right, move that to consent. All right, then we have the removal.
I think, I'm so sorry.
Oh.
I, I think, in all honesty, we should probably put these on action, because I know there's a few of these that I'm not gonna support. So, for next, the next meeting, I think we should have probably on action and vote on them.
Do you know which ones?
Individually. Well, it's, it's JCPC, but I really want to look over these some a little bit better. So, I would, like I said, I would just prefer that they be put on action, and we vote on them individually, if that's okay with everybody.
The only, only one I would suggest maybe otherwise is the visitors bureau. Kelly, typically, Mike was there, Sean was there.
Oh, yeah.
But that's, that seat needs to...
No, that's fine.
And, and I think that, I just suggested Kelly just slide right into that spot, so.
Yeah, there's also one, the one that's current, the top of the list there is removing me and putting Suzie as the provider in this case, because it's the HCCBG grant. I don't have time to get to those anymore.
Yeah.
So, you know, that one's, it's a provider position, so it's same person serving in, or same position serving in that role. So, you know, I would suggest going ahead and putting that one on consent, too.
And that's fine. I'm okay with that. I just, I didn't want, I wanted to be consistent with them if we needed to be, because I haven't looked at all of them yet.
Also, on the home and community care block grant ones, those are ones that we traditionally have trouble filling those positions. So, just note that those are ones that it takes a special somebody to be in those positions, and we just now are having the ability to fill all three of our positions for Cabarrus County, so.
Okay.
And if you have any questions about JCPC and those seats, I'll be happy to speak with you, either after this meeting, or if you want to schedule a time, to kind of explain how our process works in those seat selections.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, I misspoke. I meant region F, not home and community care block grant. The region F one.
Region F, okay.
Yeah, on the second page.
So, did we agree to any to be on consent?
I'm good with, I'm good with the visitors bureau.
All of those?
It's just one.
It's just, yeah, it's just one.
Removals?
Well, there's two that I was involved with. The first one on that one is me. Are you okay with that one going on consent?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so the first one consent, and the very last one on the next page.
I think it was really mostly just the JCPC stuff, okay? So, everything except...
Everything except for the JC.
But, I don't know. Did you want to take, was there one that you wanted to take and put on action?
Well, I was gonna go on, you can put all of them on action, but with the exception of those two, I'd still say let's put the rest of them on action.
Okay.
Okay, so all but those two that Kelly's on.
That's fine.
Not to confuse us, but we need a removal to go along with that appointment.
Yeah.
For the home and community care block grant, those three removals.
Removals would have to go for the new appointments.
If we're gonna go with the approved appointment one, we need to go along with the removal that goes with that one. We don't have to do all of them.
Okay, just to match it up.
We'll, we'll match that for you, so that it's taking me out and putting some, all the person in for that.
Yeah.
No problem.
Okay.
All means, unless, unless don't let Kelly have any risk.
Okay, I think we made it through boards and committees, and you're gonna have it right, right, Lauren?
We got it.
Okay, that's good.
Ariety's got it.
All right, Madam Clerk. All right, next is, can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda with our changes?
So moved.
Same.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, pass for zero. All right, next we have a motion to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, we are in closed session. It's approved, a closed session.